Good evening. I call this meeting in the Bastrop Independent School District Order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present at this meeting has been duly called and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I want to welcome some special guests here tonight. This is awesome. We have three retired school board members, Ms. Ty McDonald, which will be leading us in a prayer here in just a little bit, and Ms. Molly McClure, and Billy Moore. And so, thank you all for being here. We also have our CEO of our Chamber of Commerce and a retired county judge, Judge McDonald. It's good to see you. You're always smiling and I know you love the district, so thank you for being here. And Dr. Lee, you had some introductions of some new staff administration?
Oh, yes, I do. We have Dr. Danielle Riddick. She is the Director, if you'd like to stand, of Elementary Education and is new to BISD. We also have Dr. Jeremy Small, who is the Director of Secondary Education. Lizbeth Moore. Lizbeth, I can't remember if you were here the last meeting, but she is our new Director of Bilingual Education. And I also wanted to just make a note of Mr. Raspberry here. He is now our Executive Director of Facilities and Support Services.
Fantastic. All right, welcome. Good to see everybody. At this time, if you'll please arise for the Pledge Allegiance and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If you'd please remain standing with us tonight. We have Pastor Ty McDonald from Bold Church of Bastrop will offer an opening prayer this evening.
And if you would bow your heads with me and look to the Lord in prayer. Father, we thank you for this time and we thank you for this year that you've given us and we just pray your blessing upon the proceedings on tonight, dear Father, and we pray your blessing also upon the school year. We thank you, dear Father, for those who are giving of their time to be here on this evening, dear Father. I thank you for those who are committing themselves, dear Father, to building the foundations, dear Father, of our city, of our state, and of our nation through our children. And dear God, I just pray that you would place a fiery hedge of protection around them, a fiery hedge of protection around our children, dear Father. I bind the spirit of fear and the spirit of despair and anxiety, dear Father, and I just lose joy and peace into this place, dear Father, into this district, upon every school in this district, dear Father. And I just give you praise and honor and glory for the things that have been and for the things that will be. I thank you that we just get stronger and stronger and better and better, that we become, dear Father, the light that is upon the hill, that others will look toward, dear Father, for motivation and inspiration in these days. And I thank you, dear Father, for the leadership here on tonight, the school board, for our superintendent, dear Father. I thank you, dear God, that you give them boldness and courage, dear God, to be able to make the decisions that they need to make and to stand boldly in the places that you're calling them to stand in, that you've equipped them to stand in, dear Father. I thank you that even when Dr. Lee has to stand, as it were, as a Daniel in Alliance Den, dear Father, that she will have courage to do the things, dear Father, that you desire that she do for the best of this district. And I thank you, dear God, that you go forth before them and you prepare their way and you cause it to be well, you cause all to be well for them in this time, cause them to be able to do the new thing that they need to do well. And I just give you all the praise and the honor and the glory because you are worthy and we thank you, dear Father, that you shine upon this district in the name of Jesus, in the name of your shew our Savior. So be it, and amen.
Thank you, Pastor McDonald. All right, and you know, without forgetting our interim superintendent, we want to welcome you, Dr. Kristy Lee. New seat for you tonight, so, yes, thank you. All right, moving along to our student speaker of Character Education Trait for August is respect. Dr. Lee, would you introduce our student for this evening, please?
Absolutely. It is my honor to welcome Zane Riley. She is a fifth grade student at Colony Oaks Elementary. She is the youngest of five children, which I appreciate. I'm the youngest of seven children, and she loves gathering her siblings for dinner and family games. Zane enjoys swimming, spending time with friends, and competing with her acrobatics team. She's also a multi-sport athlete who plays softball, volleyball, and recently started flag football, where she even outran most of the boys. In addition, she's very involved with her church and serves on the youth worship team. Zane, I welcome you tonight and look forward to hearing what you're saying to us tonight without respect. You have it.
Hi, my name is Zane Riley. Today I will be telling you, y'all, how we are respectful in Colony Oaks and how you can be respectful in your daily life. The first thing, the first way to be respectful at Colony Oaks is being nice to your friends and other staff members. Another way to be respectful at our school is by picking up after ourselves. It is important to respect our school property and keep it clean and organized so people feel welcome to our school. It is also important to be respectful to your family and friends. You can be respectful by using manners, using kindness.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, Zane, before you leave. Zane, come on back up. Those were some great messages that we can all remember. I agree with you. Who did you bring with you tonight?
My mom and dad.
Your mom and dad. Can you introduce them and have them stand up? One is mom and one is dad.
Thank you.
Zane, we also have a little gift for you. Thank you so much for the preparation that you did for tonight. It is not easy to speak in front of people, is it? You did a wonderful job and we look forward to having you back again. I hope you have a wonderful school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along to our recognitions and special presentations. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing Mr. Billy Moore for more than a decade of service on the Board of Trustees of the Bastrop ISD. During his 11 years, he was involved in establishing the Bastrop ISD Police Department and the Colorado River Collegiate Academy, helping to govern the district through the pandemic and support two bond incentives to build new schools and provide substantial renovations and improvements to all schools. In addition, has been a vocal advocate for students and teachers, also serving as a mentor, volunteer, and we believe in BISD member through the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce. I know you will always want Billy the best for the district and you will continue to be a strong supporter. At this time, if you'd please turn your attention to the screen. And Billy, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, Kathleen, thank you. This is just not a board member's job, it's the spouses as well. Thank you for the support and the motivation. Billy, your wisdom has been unbelievable through definitely some of the things that we read about here, the pandemic and the bonds and different things like that. So, I mean, it's meant a lot and thank you. So, Billy, if you and Kathleen would please come up to the front, we'd like to present you with this plaque of a token of our thanks and it has been an honor to serve along with you. And also say we have some other spouses of board members here tonight to support and Ms. McClure and some others for coming out for the Moore family, so thank you all again very, very much. All right, at this time, we move into our recognition of Back to School Bash Underwriters and Community Cares, Hyatt Regency of Lost Pines, and Ortho 360, Ms. Trevino, our Director of Community Relations. Welcome.
It has been a fast and furious three weeks since our Back to School Bash, but I didn't want to let too much time go by before I recognize our top sponsors. Those of you who joined us for the Bash know that we had sponsors and nonprofits, we had campus administration, we had school board members all out there supporting. But what people may not realize is that as part of that event, we were able to give away $15,000 worth of school supplies to elementary students, cover device fees for almost 300 of our students, and an additional 50 PTA membership dues for our families out there. And so, it is through our generous sponsors that we're able to make those contributions to our families. So, I would like to recognize the following. Ortho 360 Orthodontics, who came in with a $3,000 sponsorship for us this year. Hyatt Regency Lost Pines, who also came in with a $3,000 sponsorship. And then finally, Community Care Health Centers, they were a true partner with us this year. They came to the event and brought 900 stuffed backpacks for students and also had health screenings and offered free immunizations at their Dell Valley Clinic the Saturday following the event. So, I would love to invite representatives from those organizations up to receive an award of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, thank you again for your generosity, really, really means a lot. Definitely takes a community, not a village anymore, we're a big district, to help all these children and move them forward. All right, at this time, we'll move into our open forum. The board welcomes comments from district citizens and employees, individuals or group representatives who have signed up, may speak, focusing on public education topic. Please note, the board cannot discuss or act on any issue not listed on the agenda. The purpose for open forum is to gather input only. Agenda-related issues will be addressed in the appropriate time. At this time, looks like we have one speaker and we will be given three minutes and our speaker for this evening is Molly McClure.
Good evening, interim superintendent, Dr. Lee, the president of the board, Ashley Moonshick, and all board members. I'm excited to speak this evening. This is the first time I have spoken in open forum and I debated whether to bring my notes or not, so I've decided I'm really going to speak from my heart. I am here to recognize and thank Billy Moore for his time, all of the years that he worked for the children and the teachers and the families of Bastrop ISD. And I wanted to share that I consider Billy a real, a true servant leader. And in, I'm saying that because, and it was exemplified tonight when you saw the video of all the events where he was, and those are just a smithering of the times that we saw Billy out in the community. I think that he, Billy and Kathleen raised their family in Bastrop, their boys graduated from Bastrop schools and have been exceptional young men then and now, but he, so he knows our community, but he took it upon himself to be there. He was always at the events. He went to the we believe visits, when we would visit the schools, to thank the teachers. He would be at the science fairs as a judge. He would read to the children. He would, I think he helped launch out maybe four or five classes to the moon at Red Rock Elementary. But he was always there and I realized as a school board member, and I served with Billy for nine years, we were elected the same year and we served together for nine years. And during my time on this board, I recognized that each person comes with their individual expertise and they bring that to form a bond together with the trust that comes with that, with each difference in each person, to form a bond where they direct that toward the success of all the children in Bastrop. And it's really a, it's an exceptional experience, but I believe that one thing, the biggest thing, and Billy has many expertise, but the biggest thing was his community involvement that he would bring to the board and then he would be their voice when we were, when we were talking about different things that we had to make decisions. So, I just wanted to share that I feel that that exemplary commitment to the community and then, and taking that a step further and letting them see that the interest that he had in them as well as the representation of the school board, that they were very important to all of you that maybe couldn't be at all of these events, that he did that with such grace and just, and just an honorable, he didn't bring attention to himself, but he was just a quiet, graceful man that I think served us very well by his presence. So, thank you for letting me speak this evening and thank you, Billy and Kathleen.
All right, at this time, we'll move into our superintendent's report. Before we get into our presentations, I understand that, Dr. Lee, you have some information to share with the board and community regarding your time thus far as interim superintendent.
I do, thank you very much. When I, you know, learned of the privilege of serving in this role as interim superintendent, I said to the board that one of the things that I wanted to be able to do during a school board meeting was to present a report to the community, just from my perspective, of what I was seeing and hearing as I'm with our staff and with our students, and so that first report is tonight. So, I've been interim superintendent for about three weeks now. One of my goals for this transition, as I shared with the board, was more consistent communication with our staff and with our families. So, to date, I have been able to communicate directly with all of our families and with our staff multiple times and have received some really positive feedback about that. They're liking that communication and hopefully I don't wear out my welcome with the communication. I've also been meeting with staff and just listening to their concerns and their experiences of being here in BISD. Noli and I have sort of gone on a little tour, she's been my right-hand person. We have met with the business office, with HR, Student Services, Curriculum and Instruction. We've met with all the nurses and counselors. We have met with the Police Department, Special Programs, so many, Child Nutrition, and additional departments to round out. All of the staff will, you know, be occurring in the next two weeks, so we'll finish them. So, when I've gone to talk with staff, I've basically been asking them four questions. One, what is it that you're most proud of about Bastrop ISD? The second question is, what challenges do you face in your role that you feel like district leadership needs to understand better so that we can do better for you? The third question, I shared with them the priorities that I'd shared with the board of more consistent communication, more visibility in our schools, and just continuing to drive excellence in all areas. But I wanted to know from their perspective, were there other priorities that they thought I should be focusing on and gave them an opportunity to tell me. And finally, I wanted to know, because if I'm sending more communication, I want it to be good communication and not just a bunch of stuff. So, I asked them, what is it that you're looking for? If you were to hear more from the superintendent's office, what do you want to hear more about? So, it has been great, the input has been very valuable, Noli has been collecting all that. When it's all said and done, I look forward to coming back and probably in September and sharing with you a little bit more detail, a summary of what I'm hearing. Now, I'll start meeting with each of the schools and so Noli has, she's got me on a whirlwind tour, I'm telling you. But we're going to start going to the schools and hearing from our teachers and staff and I look forward to, and from students, so I look forward to doing that. Just some other updates, we've had a great first few days of school for the 25, 26th school year. Opening Adleton has been a really exciting experience and lots of happy little armadillos going to school. One, two little brothers, Josh and I were trustee coy. We were outside of Adleton and talking to two little brothers and I said, are you happy to be an armadillo? And he said, I'm not an armadillo. It was very confusing for him. And Dr. Mix has an even funnier story, but I'll let him tell you that another time. But I want to do, I want to thank the trustees. Nearly all of you have been out in our schools in these first few days of school or since Back to School Bash and that has been amazing. We've experienced some typical bus issues as we do in these first few days and Gold Star is working on that as we kind of shake out our routes and who's riding the bus. We have 104 routes this year, so we expanded quite a bit. In addition, we have 9,400 riders scheduled to ride bus service. We're only doing about 8,700 right now, so it'll vary from day to day, but that's a lot of kiddos, right, riding our bus. And I have a lot of faith in Gold Star, they put safety as a priority and so I know that they're doing their best to get our kids safely to and from school and home each and every single day. You've probably heard about this, we instituted a new cellphone policy, as did all Texas schools everywhere. Our principals have reported just today, in fact, when we had our principals' meeting, that this is going very well. Our kids are complying, they're cooperating, they're not giving their teachers a hard time. Of course, there've been little things here and there, but we're very proud of the response so far to this new policy where they can't have their phone, their phones are in their backpacks all day, all day, and they're surviving. It's okay, we can do it. Current district enrollment sits at 13,204 as of today. The first, you know, nine to 10 days of school fluctuates quite a bit as new kids continue to enroll every single day. Enrollment is slightly lower than what we were expecting, so we'll continue to see how that shakes out over these first couple of weeks and we'll go through the process. Diana Green, our Chief Human Resources Officer, and her team will go through the process of working with principals to balance and we'll see where do we have more enrollment than we expected, where do we have less enrollment than we expected, and we may have to do some staff shifts, so we'll be, we'll be working on that. I know the board was very excited to have MTSS return to our schools this year, so we have staffed six of our nine positions and I think we're about done with a seventh solution, so that just leaves us two more and we're continuing to recruit to get those finished. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity of listening to me and give this brief report and look forward to continuing this conversation at our next meeting in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. And to add to that, shout out to our Police Department for your patience and understanding with traffic and I know that a lot of parents like to drop their kids off and also with the community for their input on a lot of traffic at all of our campuses and we did discuss that this afternoon in a meeting and we are a growing community and there's a lot of things going on. And to add to that, Dr. Lee also met with each board member individually as well, asking these questions, so she has been extremely busy and so thank you for your energy and your efforts and just continue on here, so through this process. All right, now we'll move into our superintendent's report. Dr. Lee, our interim superintendent, we have our curriculum report of 2025 Accountability and Academic Achievement Update. Dr. Lee?
It'll be Jennifer Everly.
Jennifer Everly, yes.
Hey. So, good evening, school board and Dr. Lee. We've given you multiple updates on our preliminary data, thanks to our awesome data team with Rachel Repke and Sean Smith, yay. So, we're here tonight, though, to present what was released last week with our finalized 2025 accountability. So, with that, account, the accountability system's very complex, but if you put it into three categories, one, it's student achievement, so looking at our percentage of students scoring at the different star performance levels. We're looking at stew, full progress that has two components, one, that's the student growth measure, and two is our relative performance of how we compare to similar districts and campuses. The last one is closing the gaps, which looks at how we're closing the gaps for our underperforming student populations. So, now let's take a look at those four, those three domains broken down from 24 to 25. As you see in domain one, our student achievement, we did see a six-point increase that put us at a 70 at a C. Domain two A, which is our student growth, we saw a three-point growth, and in two B, we saw a six-point growth, which is our relative performance and how we compare to other districts and campuses. Now, domain three is the one that we are most proud of. We told you a week ago that it was 19 points. When it all shook out, it was a 21-point growth, which took us up two full letter grades in closing the gaps, which is huge. With that, all of those put together, when you take our domains, gave our overall accountability score a 10-point jump, which took us up to a 71, that's a C. But I want to put this growth into a little more perspective. TEA put out a press release this week that talked about the overall scores across the district and just so you know, only 24% of districts across the state of Texas saw a full letter grade. Texas saw a full letter grade increase this year. We're one of those guys. Yay. So, now let's look at our individual campuses. When you look at our secondary campuses, we saw multiple campuses with double-digit increases in their overall accountability scores, as well as letter grade increases, led by our two comprehensive high schools with Bassdrop High School seeing a 14-point jump and Cedar Creek High School seeing a 17-point jump, one point away from a B right there. With our elementary schools, we saw similar things. Multiple campuses seeing overall gains in their score, as well as increases in letter grades for each of the camp, for the campuses. I would like to note that in our accountability system, we do have a rule called a 3F or a 3D rule, meaning that if you have three Fs in the domains that I mentioned before, you cannot make above a 59 on an overall accountability score. The same things apply with a 3D rule. If you have three Ds, you cannot make above a 69. I do want to note that this impacted three of our campuses. Cedar Creek Middle School, Lost Pines Elementary, and Camino Real Elementary mathematically should have a letter grade above what's shown on the screen, but fell into those rules. Therefore, they were capped at those 59 or 69 points. So, let's take a look at some of our accountability highlights. On our overall scores, we saw nine campuses increase a full letter grade with one of them maintaining an A, and our 14 of our campuses increased in their overall numeric score. Again, putting that into perspective, TEA reported only 31% of campuses across the state saw a full letter grade increase, and we had nine of them in our district. In domain two, 12 of our, in domain one, 12 of our campuses increased their numerical score. In domain three, closing the gaps, where we saw the biggest increases, 12 campuses increased a full letter grade. One maintained their overall A. Our college career and military readiness points increased by 29 points, and 10 of our campuses met the growth targets for Telpass. Now, with that, TEA also gives out seven possible distinctions that can be earned by the campuses or district. We're proud to say that three of our campuses earned distinctions for 2025. Bassdrop High School earned one for post-secondary readiness. Cedar Creek High School earned one for post-secondary readiness. And Circa earned a post-secondary readiness, as well as academic achievement in RLA, math, and social studies. So, as we continue to move forward, it's also important to note areas of continued improvement and focus. Although these campuses saw an overall growth in their score, there are four campuses that did earn the lowest rating for 25, for the 25 accountability. During the 25-26 school year, these campuses will receive differentiated supports, including continuing our monthly campus support meetings, weekly one-to-one leadership support directly from myself and the director of elementary or secondary, frequent instructional walks with district leadership, and we've got a couple of special education and intervention pilots aimed at improving services and staffings on these campuses. So, here's, and I said this at the chamber, and I fully mean it, growth like this doesn't happen overnight or by chance. Takes a lot of dedicated people, both in our school district and our community, with a single goal of increasing student achievement. And I want to take just a moment to recognize some of the people in this journey. This growth is a reflection of the hard work of our students, campus staff, and campus administrators. They make the magic happen every day. So, thank you to those people for continuing to show up and show out. Thank you to everybody that works behind the scenes to make the wheels of the district spin. Everybody plays a part in the student success that we see. And last, I want to say thank you to all of you. Growth like this doesn't happen without a supportive school board. We embarked on a curriculum journey two years ago, and you have supported us every step of that way. One of the last messages I want to leave you here is, growth doesn't stop here. We are on a mission. This year has given us the momentum and the excitement to continue to push the bar for our next goal. So, as I close out today, the elementary teacher and me leaves you with the letter of the year, and the letter of the year is B. We're going to continue to build our bridge to success, starting with our youngest learners all the way to, through our graduating seniors. With that comes also building strong partnerships with our community, families, and schools. And like I said before, we're not stopping here, guys. Our eye is on the B. That's our next goal, is we're aiming an accountability. So, as we're celebrating the successes, recognizing the focus areas, and using this momentum, we're going to continue our growth to that. So, thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Jennifer. It was a great presentation. I know a lot of work goes into this, and it's such a confusing topic. The domains are confusing. The accountability is confusing. So, Rachel and data analytics and all the things they do there is incredible. So, my question's on the slide you went through with the individual campuses. So, to you and/or Rachel, is there any discussion or healthy arguments going on with TEA on removing those caps or doing something different with?
There's always, always healthy discussion going on around the accountability system. Let's just be honest about that. Always healthy discussion going on around that. It's just something we do feel like noting, because for instance, you know, a 59 and a 62 is a three-point difference. And in the accountability system, that three points is huge. Yes, there's always discussion and always opportunities to give feedback, but as of right now, that still stands.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Jennifer.
Yep.
Talked to one of the administrators earlier coming in, and they were just saying that, you know, with the start of the school, you know, they're just at a point where they're just tired, happy. Because school has started. We're getting all the kids in and getting them educated and looking forward to going forward with this year. And I just really appreciate everything the administration's done to, I think Yates probably said it best. He said, you know, "Education is not filling the pale. It's lighting a fire." And administration just keeps pushing to get these kids to light their fire and keep them going, so that we see those distinctions that our high schools have earned. And really just appreciate everything.
Yeah. And I'd like to echo that. Great job at the chamber luncheon, by the way, and also stepping up you and Dr. Lee and the letter B. That's great for the community to hear that. And I want to thank the principals, the administration for the last two years, this school board, okay? Because we've seen social media. We've seen ridiculous presentations at community organizations. And it wasn't popular. We didn't hear that. But I will tell you, Mr. Edwards kept saying, "Stick with me. Stick with us. Stick with the curriculum. Stick with the curriculum. It takes two years." And so, we got the ship turned. And thank you for stepping in at your position during the turning of that ship and being involved in the past. So, let's keep going. We look forward to that, to that B rating. And we're here to help each and every campus, anything we can do. Please get with Ms. Everly and let us know. And we're excited, and we're behind you. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Just real quick, two years ago, when we, you know, rolled out the new curriculum, there were, there was a lot of heels in the sand, but people really dug in and trusted the process. So, thank you to everyone. That's been a big part of that, and everyone in this room, and it's been here over the last two years, even though they're not in this room right now. So, thank you to everyone. Good job.
Now, it's also going to be intentional is one of my favorite words. And I think that, that each school hit this goal with intention. And I see that intention coming for the letter B. So, congratulations to all of you. Thank you for all of your hard work, and let's keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving along to our facilities and support services report. Ms. Everly, you're, no, I'm sorry. We're, oh, it's underneath there. Mr. Raspberry, I didn't mean to take that away from you here. I gotta, I gotta read the presenter under the topic, not above the topic here. I got it. All right. Well, great. Well, give us the 2021-2023 bond project update, please.
Will do. Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Lee, good evening. I'm happy to be here this evening with you to share an update of our current construction projects across the district. We'll start with Adleton Elementary. 100% complete. Our screen's bopping around a little bit there.
It's the train.
Oh, is it the train? Okay.
Welcome to Bassdrop.
Wow.
Well, it's never happened during my presentation. The campuses or the project is currently in the warranty phase, which will last, builder's warranty lasts about a year, and then we'll have extended warranty on certain systems within the campus, delivered on schedule and within budget, happy to say. So, there's a, there's a nice aerial view of the campus after it's opened. I want to say this was probably Tuesday or Wednesday. No, it would have to be Wednesday, right? I think it was the first day that Chris and I went out there. Campus is in really good shape. Here's a view of the south elevation and the littles playground, a view of the north elevation and the bigs playground for the others, other kids, or older, older students. Mina Elementary, Phase Two, roughly 34% complete. The CMU in, the tall CMU is 75% complete. First and second floor framing near completion. The MEP passed inspection. Second floor MEP overhead is ongoing. We had a really, we had a really nice beam signing ceremony out there on the 12th. We had our partners, our construction partners, Bartlett-Cock brought, they painted a large I-beam, brought it out there, put it on sawhorses. And then, we invited the staff. The principal, Mr. Hans, had close to 80, I think. I think that was the number that he was counting on, 80. Staff members come out, and everybody got to sign the beam. This beam will be placed above the stage. Obviously, it's not going to be exposed, but, you know, we may go back a few years from now and put a ladder up there and just let people take a look at it. I don't know. But it was, it was a really neat, it was a really neat beam signing. There's a picture of the campus itself, along with kitchen and cafeteria, what I call the tall CMU. Second floor framing is underway. There's our beam signing. I think it was a great event. Bassdrop and Cedar Creek Middle School additions, roughly 45% complete. Exterior brick metal wall panels ongoing. New eight-track units are set. MEP overhead 90% complete. Interior sheet rock is ongoing. Suspended ceiling started. Athletic track resurfacing 80% complete, and both athletic fields have been stripped, regraded, re-sotted. New irrigation. This project too is on schedule. There's a picture of the fine arts edition at Bassdrop Middle School. Track renovation resurfacing. Cedar Creek Middle School Fine Arts Edition. That's their athletic field and track resurfacing taking place. This is the Bassdrop Middle School and Cedar Creek Middle School band halls. Riverside and Creekside Middle School renovations are 100% complete. We opened on 8/13. We are in the warranty phase on those projects as well, delivered on schedule and within budget. Riverside and Creekside Middle School additions, roughly 70% complete. Completion date scheduled for December 2025. Interior CMU is complete. MEP overhead 90% complete. Interior sheet rock and paint ongoing. New competition gyms 80% complete. This project is on schedule as well. There's Riverside Middle School Fine Arts Edition. There's Riverside Middle School Science and Gym Edition on the other side of the school. Here's the Creekside Middle School Fine Arts Edition and Creekside Middle School Science and Gym Edition, again, on the other side of the campus. Bassdrop High School additions and renovations, roughly 11% complete. Approximately 38,000 square foot classroom wing, competition gym, dance studio, and complete re-roof of the campus. New classroom wing, building pad is underway. Competition gym pad and footings are underway. They're getting ready to pour those. Additional student parking, site work, and Bear Drive renovation underway, both on the north and south side of Bear Drive. As you can see here, Bear Drive kind of left of center a little bit, has been completely torn out, and they have already started back on the north side of Bear Drive, rebuilding it. Here's a, here's a view of the back of the campus. You can see the large detention pond just in the fore, just in front of the tennis courts. And then, the area that's got lime on it, the white area, will be primarily student parking. And then, just in front of that, you're going to see where the new gym will be. We've, we've seal coated and repainted the gym, or the band marching pad, and that project is ongoing. Police administration and operations, roughly 42% complete, scheduled for completion March 2026. This is our 55,000 square foot facility for police administration, operations, and construction, child nutrition, warehouse, print shop. This also includes 10,000 square feet of second floor space that is, is being prepared for teacher and staff development space. The engineered metal building roof and siding is ongoing. Second floor pour, 8/22. Parking area concrete is 30% complete. It's actually a little bit higher than that, because they've had a poor sense. MEP overhead is underway, and this project too is under, is on schedule. There's an aerial of our police and ops building, really starting to take shape. Once you, once you get out of red steel and start getting some metal on it, it really starts to come together. So, we're very happy. Chasco's doing a great job. One thing that I would like to say, and I, I'm a little remiss for not mentioning this in my previous updates, and I just want to take a minute to thank our construction and design partners, because they really, you know, they kind of go, they're kind of the unsung heroes. And I don't think a lot of people know what these guys do, guys and gals do, on a day-to-day basis. And it's not just, it's not just the building of the schools. It's the supporting of the district. We had, we had American Constructors, Bartlett-Cock, and Chasco working with us during the first week of school, having their subs respond to HVAC issues that we may have, that our folks couldn't get to. So, I just want to take a moment to just thank them, because they really, again, it's a lot of things that we don't know they do, but they do, and they do it very well. And so, we're very fortunate to have the partners that we have in the district. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
I do, I just want to make a remark, because I told you I didn't think Adleton was going to be completed, and you proved me wrong. And I, and I thought, no, I need to make a public. Congratulations.
Well, I know that you know that it was going to be done, but, but thank you for any, you know, sometimes we run it right up to the, right up to the wire.
Well, with construction, you never can tell.
Well, and I've said it before, a lot of times, you're going to have flooring subs going out the back door, kids coming in the front door. But that's okay, because we, we hold classes, you know?
Congratulations and good job.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah. I didn't see anything about Cedar Creek High School. Is that addition still on?
I left a slide out.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you for, thank you for mentioning that Cedar Creek High School is doing well. They're on time. They're on budget. If you've seen it from the, if you've seen it from the road, if you've seen it from 71, they've got the blue panels up, the, they've got all the stone done around the base. They're already painting sheet rock, and they're painting inside. The Sky Bridge is complete. The science classrooms inside have been completed. So, they're, they're, they're on schedule. They're really doing well. That's another Bartlett-Cock project, and I can't believe I forgot that slide. That's my fault. But thank you for bringing that to my attention. That wing is going to be in the winter, so we're shooting for December, I believe, to open that wing.
I will say also about Cedar Creek High School, some things that we were able to do that we were not originally planning. The band practice pad.
Yep.
The kids there really didn't have a designated place, so they were just out in a field, an unmarked field. So, it's, it's going to be great for those kiddos to really enhance their, their marching band skills. We were also able to completely power wash the school, repaint the front, so that you see that beautiful blue is, is really clear, and it's going to go nicely with that addition that's on the, whatever that side is, the south?
West.
Exactly. And so, Cedar Creek High School was one of only two, if I'm not mistaken, two high schools in this region that did not have a band marching pad. And so, now they have a great band marching pad. It too has been painted, and they're very excited about that. And again, I can't believe I forgot that slide. But anyway, I will, next time I'm up here, here, I'll make sure that I lead with the Cedar Creek High School slides. Any other questions?
No, just some other comments. Thank, thank you and Dr. Lee and Mr. Edwards, since this started with Bonds passing, and I know you jumped in in the, in the middle, even from our first two elementaries, just getting feedback from our architects, and I was just curious with some of them, of the things that were adjusted, adapted, what we've learned from building the first two, and some of the, the things that they tweaked for Adleton, and of course, we have another fourth elementary coming down the road, so it's great that you're getting feedback from the, from the staff and things like that. And it could be as easy as a line in the hallway, so the kids do either notice they're on the right or left, or either walk the line. So, and you see them lined up and going down, but, so anyways, but thank y'all for, it's been a lot of meetings, it's still a lot of meetings, but thanks for staying on it. It's, y'all are doing a great job for the taxpayers.
Thank you.
And Mr. Raspberry, congratulations on your expanded role.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sure she's real happy about that, your, the expansion.
She can do it all, you know? But, but no, I appreciate it.
We're happy about that.
Thank you.
So I'm happy about it.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any, any other comments? Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, moving along, our financial and human resources and Police Department reports for information only, which moves us into our--
Mr. President, I do have a comment, if, if I may, on the Police Department report. I'm looking at it, and I just, I want to bring this out and just, I guess, let people be aware that as far as the campuses are concerned, there's, there is now going to be a behavior threat assessment team. And my understanding, I know I did talk to Chris, Dr. Lee, as far as, I recently attended a mitigating education educator maltreatment class, basically, it was, it was-- Districts are realizing that teachers are now perhaps being a little, well, no, they're, they're being assaulted by students, and, and I did ask the district whether there is a policy, and now you all did give me a policy as far as it is in the student handbook, and allowing now that the teachers do have a recourse. I think they always had, but they now really have a recourse if a student has a behavior issue, and, and I do appreciate that. And I'm just going back, and I'm just, I guess I want to confirm that each campus now does have a behavior assessment team?
The campuses have had for, for several years, a behavior threat assessment team.
Team.
Yes. And you are correct. In fact, Dr. Morris was able to share today with the principals that we've, we've had a longstanding practice of ensuring that kids are held accountable when they have, you know, put a staff member in danger, or, you know, said anything that would be harassing or, or something like that. But now we've put a statement in the student handbook, which is just another way to emphasize that this is important to us, that we treat all of our staff with respect.
I just wanted to point that out, that the district is going to now take it, not that they haven't taken it seriously, but that now it is in writing, and hopefully more action will be held, or the students will be held accountable if such action is taken. Thank you.
All right. Moving along to our consent agenda, would any board member like to pull or discuss any other consent agenda items at this time?
Hold on, hold on. Oh, yes. I just want to confirm on the, I just, just confirm, I, I, not a discussion, don't want to pull it, but I just want to confirm this. On the approval of the Lesser Crass PC Proactive Legal Services, item H, we are opting out of that optional communication services. It had to do with district may elect to participate in a Lesser Crass Communication Support Program, and we're not checking it, and is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other one was item M, consider approval of policy update. Oh, just a question on the update. It had in here that this, it had to do with school safety transfers and the parent of a student who becomes a victim. Why would, why would you put it on the parent whose child was the victim to transfer as opposed to the person who was the perpetrator? And that's just a little clarification.
Where's that located?
That's going to be your policy, page 154, your update 125.
Dr. Morris can address that for you.
Yeah, that's just clarification.
Respond to that, and that is on a case-by-case basis, so we consider all of the circumstances, and then we make the most appropriate change of placement for the student. Sometimes it is more appropriate to change the places, change the placement for the student who has been the victim, and that may have to do with special education, 504, emergent bilingual services that they receive. It might not even have anything to do with the incident at all, or it might have to do with transportation and what we can feasibly provide them in a different campus than where they are zoned to attend. Or they might be eligible to attend one of our non-comprehensive high schools like Genesis or Circa, whereas the alleged perpetrator might not be eligible to those campuses. So it's just on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, but something does happen to the perpetrator?
Correct, yes, yes. That discipline is administered in accordance with the code of conduct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving along to action items. Consider approval of staff development waiver. Kinder Monk, our Director of Leadership Development and School Improvement, welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Lee and school board members. Tonight, we're looking at the recommendation of approval of our staff development waiver for 2025, 2026. House Bill 22, excuse me, 2442, has our instructional minutes at 75,600 for our students. With this waiver, we're allowed to trade essentially professional development for those days that students would be in school. Typically, we've used this in the past for, to count for days, catastrophic events, late starts, something that shuts the school down, so we're able to transfer those minutes through this waiver. And we're only allowed to use up to 2,100 minutes per school year, and we usually use way less than that. And so for the 25, 26 school year, we want to ensure that we have the option to use this waiver in case of school delay or late start due to weather or other catastrophic events. So our recommendation is to approve the staff development minutes waiver as presented.
I move to approve the staff development waiver as presented.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Morris. I'm sorry, Ms. Monk, I'm getting all the names. I got, I'm reading up instead of below here, so we'll get back to Dr. Morris here. All right, we're going to consider adopting the 2025, 2026 Student Code of Conduct, Dr. Morris, our Director of Student Services, welcome back again.
Thank you. Good evening, interim superintendent Dr. Lee, President Mu Ching, and members of the board. The Student Code of Conduct for the 2025, 26 school year does have five changes, all as a result of the 89th legislative rulings. Those include, as Dr. Lee mentioned earlier, the prohibition of using personal communication devices, including cell phones and smartwatches on campus during the instructional day without an approved medical exemption. Language is added to reflect that a teacher may initiate a formal removal of a student from a class based on a single incident of behavior that is unruly, disruptive, or abusive toward the teacher, another adult, or another student in the classroom, or for engaging in conduct that constitutes bullying, as defined by Education Code 37.0832.0. In the past, that removal had to be preceded with a series of documented pattern of behavior, rather than one significant or single incident. Language has been updated as a result of the 89th legislative session to reflect changes from in-school suspension, or ISS, previously being limited to three school days. Students may now be assigned up to 10 days per offense, and the ISS may be extended upon principal review at least once per 10 days without limitation, as long as the student receives comparable academic and behavioral services to what they would receive in the general education setting. There has been no change to the length of out-of-school suspension that is still capped at three days per offense. And then language is updated to permit the assignment of out-of-school suspension, or OSS, to students in grades pre-K through 2, or students who qualify for McKinney-Vento Services, or what we would vernacularly refer to as homeless, for significantly disrupting the classroom learning environment. And finally, as a result of the 89th legislative session rulings, we've added a language to the code of conduct that reflects students may be expelled for engaging in conduct related to a false alarm or report, including a bomb threat or terroristic threat involving a public school, or for committing Title V felonies off-campus, even if the felony is not committed on or within 300 feet of district property, and whether or not the felony is committed at a school-sponsored event. And so based on the fact that we are updating our student code of conduct to be in compliance with these new laws, I recommend that the board approve the adoption of the 2025, 26 Student Code of Conduct as presented, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Dr. Morris?
I do have. On the, on the second one, the removal of the student, and it just said on the single incident, I mean, is that, what, what right now is the plan for that student to be once removed from the classroom? Now, I'm assuming the teacher has to have, I mean, give permission for that student to come back to the classroom, so what happens if the teacher says no? What happens if she's having a bad day, he's, the student's having a bad day? What's the plans on this?
If the teacher does not agree to let the student come back, then there is a return to class plan. There is a committee of teachers and administrators who meet to review, is there any other setting for that child? And if not, and the child does have to go back into the classroom of the teacher who removed them, then that return to class plan must be put in place on the day that the student returns to class, and the student cannot be out of that classroom for more than three school days. So the commissioner did just release on Friday what that return to class plan looks like, so it is a two-page form. It will be filled out by an administrator, not a teacher, and it will be in place similar to what we would have, like an IEP and a behavior intervention plan for a student with special education services who needs behavioral support.
So you're saying you would put the student back into the classroom?
Yes, that's never our preference. If we can put the student in another classroom, like you say, sometimes it's just personality conflict, sometimes the student needs more structure than they're getting, but sometimes it's just not feasible. Sometimes we have students who receive special education, 504, emergent bilingual services, and those may only be available in that particular setting, so it just might not be possible for us to put the student elsewhere.
Does this, does the teacher get some type of added support? Because you already know there's a conflict.
There may be additional support, and if so, it'll be included in that return to class plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Morris? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the 2025, 2026 Student Code of Conduct as presented. Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Morris.
Dr. Morris, can I ask you one more question before you go?
Sure.
Because you're kind of the resident expert on this. This is really regarding SB 12, which was under parental rights. There is a bullet on here that says we're required as a district to notify parents of changes in services for a student's health, or if they suspect a criminal offense has been committed against their child. So the question I have is if there is a parent who has committed an offense against a child, we're not reporting to, right, to them?
Correct.
We're holding them accountable.
Right. We're only notifying parents for incidents that we do not suspect they have involvement in either directly or indirectly.
Good. It did, I didn't clarify on here, and I didn't go back and check, but I knew you would know. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we will consider approval of proposed tax rate to be presented at the public meeting to be held in September. Mike White, our Chief Finance Officer.
Thank you, sir. So as you guys know, we, we came to you in, in June for the budget adoption process, right? And we talked about the debt budget based on a certain tax rate for MNO and for debt service. So now we're starting the, the second part of that two-step process, which is the adoption of the tax rate, this being for the 25, 26 fiscal year. Couple of things to note. So state law still continues to have tax rate compression in it. We've seen that, we've seen our MNO rate compressed down in, in recent years. One of the things that's kind of unique about this year is our local value growth did not exceed the requirement to compress, compress more, right? So in a nutshell, because of the increase in the homestead exemption, we've lost that value, right? And so you have to exceed a certain amount of growth before it triggers a compression. So whereas we've seen 42% a couple of years ago, and then 7% or 8% the last couple of years, we have about, a drop of about 2.7% when, when all that value, that taxable value got bought down by the state. So that's one, that's one difference that you, you'll see this year as opposed to, you know, many, many years recently. Another thing that, that's of note is that we are closing a transaction for the remaining bond, 2023 bond funds. And both of these points actually were, were brought up a little bit in, in the, the presentation with, with Josh, our financial advisor. We are going to keep our INS tax rate at the same, the 40.1 cents that it's been for, for several years, and use fund balance, INS fund balance. So when we proposed maintaining that rate, as discussed previously, that does include a little bit of a draw on that fund balance that was in the original budget you adopted in June, so if you go back and look, it had that. Our values didn't drop as much as we anticipated, so even though I think the, the budget is an use of $3.6 million of reserves, it'd probably be closer to half of that. So, but that is a commitment we continue to uphold for our voters that supported those bond issues. A little bit of history here, 10 years of value growth. You see that 2022 jump post-COVID that we talked about, over 42%? So we're sealing, really seeing a cooling off overall. You're seeing that play out in the real estate market and a lot of homestead sales and those kind of things. So, you know, probably looking more 3%, 4%.
Mike, this is, just to interrupt, but this is, the reason it's going down is because we anticipate the $140,000 homestead exemption to be passed in November.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I should, yeah, that's a good point. Everyone assumes the adoption in November, but this, yes, this is based on, on that assumption.
So our, our total value actually didn't go down, it's just--
No, no, it's a big, a significant amount was carved out for that, and, and we're moving forward. I assume if voters choose not to have their taxes cut, we'll come back and the state would, you know, figure out Plan B, but I don't think that's going to happen. But, yeah, so this is with that change that came about this session. So a little bit of perspective, you will quite see that, that trajectory we wanted a couple of years ago. So on the MNO side, the real interesting part of this, given that the INS rate has been 40.1 cents going back all the way to the start of House Bill 3 in 2018, 19, so for some time, it's been that amount. The MNO compression that I talked about, the blue line, you can kind of see what's happened, you know, going back to when we were at $1.4, everybody compressed to 97 cents, and then depending on the amount of growth you had locally, it started to deviate. So we are going to be at that same 0.6669 on the MNO side, and proposing to remain the same at 40.1 cents on the, on the INS side. So I thought that was a good graphic of an overall tax rate, and this is a summary of everything I've said. So we had the TEA approved our compression calculation in early August. That was a big milestone that came out after our certified values in, in July 25th. And so that allowed us to come forward, publish, and, and get ready for adoption in September of the rates that are shown tonight. So with the board's support, asking you to approve the proposed rates to move forward-- to move forward with that process for adoption next month.
Any questions for Mr. White? All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the tax rate to be presented and adopted at the September board meeting as presented.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. White, don't run off. We're going to consider approval of amendment to the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six child nutrition fund budget.
Yes, sir. So also going back to June, when we adopted the original budget as required by law for the general fund, child nutrition, and debt service, with the child nutrition department, we hadn't even made the switch yet. So we hadn't hired staff. We definitely hadn't developed a substantial budget and fleshed all that out. Been working with our, our great new director, Rachel Talapour. Now that we have most of the hiring done, the FTE set, we've developed the non-payroll budget, all those things, we're ready to come back and really refine what we presented to you in June. And we told you we'd come back and present real numbers, if you will, so that we have a baseline for this, this year moving forward. Of course, it, it's more subject to change this first year because we've been outsourced for so long, you know? So definitely working through that. But here's what, what that looks like. One of the things we did in June was more or less take the existing budget and, and add a growth factor. One thing that included, had that in that number was some investment in, in equipment, replacing older, older equipment in the kitchen and, and capital needs. I don't participate at that level. We might come back and, and do the same thing this next, this year. But for now, I just wanted to, to kind of go back to our base budget, our baseline. And that's closer to nine-point-three million dollars. Still balanced budget, still comfortable with it, but very different than when you outsource. And so that's what this looks like here tonight. And we wanted to just bring that back to you for, for revision.
Is this all related to the federal program not providing as much revenue? They dropped one-point-three million?
No. It's really not a drop in revenue. We, we, most of that was, we've been operating at a, at a small surplus. We'll probably do the same thing under the new program. So it's, it's a balanced budget, but the reality is there may be, you know, we always anticipate a small surplus there. Once we have fully staffed up and, and kind of got a, a good idea on what our expenses are, this could revise again. If anything, our federal revenues may go up a little bit. They've adjusted the lunch prices, the amount they give us for, for the free, free meals and everything a little bit. Have that information. But, you know, it just depends. This year was different because we went into reserves. We had, you know, we had the money. We, we had the need to improve some of our kitchens. We spent over a million dollars. So that's one of the things we, we always look at is making sure we're at a, you know, we have the reserves that we need according to law. But if we have things that need to be improved in our kitchens, that we do so. So it's a delicate balance. It's, it's a healthy fund balance currently, so.
And I think at the end of the day, the important thing is all the kids are being fed.
Yes, sir. We plan to do that every day. And it, it, we're hearing great returns. Rachel's done a great job with her leadership. The transition has been smooth. We talked about it last couple of months. And we're almost fully staffed as well and, and still setting some pieces in place. But it's been a great change. So appreciate your support with that.
I move to approve the amendment to the twenty-five, twenty-six child nutrition fund budget as presented.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. White. Appreciate it. All right. Now we'll move along to consider approval of amendment to the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six compensation plan. Diane Green, our chief human resource officer.
Good evening, Dr. Lee, members of the board. I have a pretty simple presentation for you tonight. I would like to present, let's see, there we go. I'm going to get on the right screen. So we have four adjustments to the compensation plan that was previously approved in June of two thousand twenty-five. These changes do require board approval. So these amendments keep our compensation plan current with our staffing needs while ensuring fair and competitive compensation. All changes have been reviewed for budget impact in alignment with our overall compensation structure. So just, again, the four really minor. Our, we had our catering chef and executive chef in what is a support box, two, and it should have been a three. Our catering chef's going to remain in a two. Our executive chef has different duties. And so we thought it was most appropriate to put them in, in a three. We added, for the first time, two middle-school athletic trainers this year and did not add the stipend on there. So we are correcting that. And then a new position, our energy and environmental manager, which we are very excited about. This position's going to help us manage our facility's energy efficiency and environmental compliance. And then last, and, and we don't necessarily need to bring all cosmetic changes, but one that I wanted to, to make sure that we pointed out is we, with the state raises, moved over our librarian and nurse and instructional coaches, but left the word instructional coach off of that scale. So I just wanted to get that added on. And that is it. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Green? All right. I move to approve the amendment to the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six compensation plan as presented.
As second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along here to consider adoption of resolution establishing a school librarian advisory council, SLAC. And Dr. Lee, are you the presenter on this one?
I, I am, but I don't have the clicker, so someone will have to do it for me. No. Just click.
It was an ask.
Go ahead. Okay. So what I'm, what I'm bringing to you tonight in the board packet that you received was the resolution to form the school library advisory council. At the time that that was sent to you, we had not received all of the nominees from you all. So the only change is now the resolution that Mr. Mutchik and Ms. Cicas that you will sign tonight actually has the nominees listed. So go to the next slide, and we'll talk about this roster. So the library council voting membership is, includes seven parents from both the Bassdrop side and the Cedar Creek side, nominees from the school board here, and then additional members to serve in advisory that are made up, as you can see there, of one administrator, two elementary teachers, two high school teachers, and a middle-school teacher. We're recommending that those come to you for approval as well. Again, the seven are the voting membership. When we have our first meeting, which has not been set yet, but they will have to elect a chair. They will have to set their meeting schedule, identify what their procedures will be for the SLAC, that is affectionately called SLAC. You're welcome. And, and, you know, kind of establish those procedures. And then the other advisory membership will just be there for that purpose as, as advisory from our teachers.
And Dr. Lee, I see this under the voting members. We have a couple of librarians. Heather Augustine, is that correct?
Yes.
At Camino Real. And do we have another one?
Patty Miggs at Cedar Creek High School.
Okay. So that's some good institutional knowledge there for the voting members. Just want to point that out.
And do, if the public wants to come or be aware of the meetings, are they going to be posted on the website?
Yes, ma'am. These are open meetings, just like this one here. So we will post those meetings, the required days in advance. It's an open meeting, so anyone can come and sit and watch.
Any other questions for Dr. Lee? I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to adopt the resolution establishing a school library advisory council as presented.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any approve, or disapprove? All right. Moving along here to consider approval of a resolution for FNCE local, FD local, FM local, and EFB local. Dr. Lee?
These were the policies that we brought to you last month that were provided by our policy consultant as the ones that were most urgent coming out of the eighty-ninth legislative session. So again, one relates to the SLAC that you all just approved the resolution for. One relates to the cellphone policy that we've already been using since school started last Wednesday. As you know, all students have to have their cellphones in their backpacks and keep them out of sight and out of use all throughout the instructional day. And then another, the two policies relate specifically to UIL extracurricular activities. This district, we're recommending that, that is not for homeschool students to participate in. The only students enrolled in BISD would participate in BISD, UIL.
Any questions for Dr. Lee?
I move to approve the revisions to FNCE local, FD local, FM local, and EFB local as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Move along to our information items, which is Board of Trustees calendar of events and as well as single budget purposes. More than fifty-thousand dollars are for information only, unless there's any questions there. However not, this will move us into our closed session. The time is now six forty-nine PM. And the board will now convene into closed meeting session to discuss the following items as allowed by the Texas Government Code, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one Attorney Consultation, and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four Personnel Matters, and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two Real Property. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. All right. At this time, we will be in the room next to us.
...
I'm sorry. I got you. I'm asking Miss Bree to join us. Personnel matters. She's a woman. She's a woman. You mind?
Yeah, no, she's not over here, no.
But everybody has to go through the paradox. And it's a very difficult one. She can step down if there's a problem. Hey, this uh...
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're sitting pretty, really.
Oh, your son over there working out today. You think he's out?
Yeah.
Hey, it's good.
It's good.
I think you're doing great today.
I don't know.
The way I'm running today was, uh, we make action. And it's here. But yeah, the interest is going to be fine.
I'm sorry.
So, uh, so that you can come on down with that, so that, yeah, you can say...
Absolutely.
...on, uh, being televised here. And so it is, uh, seven fifty-seven PM and the board will now reconvene in open session. I will entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the amendment of the resolution to declare a good cause exception for HB three.
Hold on just a second, Mr. Dillon. Are we live?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now we are? Okay, you're gonna have to do that.
Did, do I need to start over?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dillon.
I move to approve the amendment of the resolution to declare a good cause exception for HB three. I move to approve the amendment of the resolution to declare a good cause exception for HB3.
Second. Well, motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to consider approval of superintendent search firm.
I move to select lesser causes of the superintendent search firm.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carries. Before we adjourn, uh, uh, Ms. Armstrong, you had some other recognition that I, uh, so sorry I missed at the beginning, but would you mind
Yeah.
expressing that, please? There was a lot of them.
Well, I, I, I'm sure there's still people watching, so we, I, I know the board wants, is, is very proud and we want to just extend our congratulations to Priscilla because her application to the leadership TASB class was accepted and this is an application, people go in, it's from the state of Texas. Only thirty, uh, trustees are appointed or are accepted and I know it's gonna be a grueling year because she actually goes and visits other, uh, districts and talks to other trustees and when it's all said and done, she's going to become a master trustee. And that is a five percent raise.
And an extended long-time career on the scoreboard, if elected.
But congratulations, Priscilla. That's awesome.
Alrighty, uh, any objections to adjourning this meeting? If there are none, meetings adjourned. Thank you.